All right, if you wish, please join me in the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father who art in heaven, how will be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit too, I'd like to have a quick moment of silence for Tuskegee, Tuskegee Valley schools and community if we could. Thank you. Here. All right, Brandon, roll call please.
All right, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I will move.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
I have to say something. This is the first time, I think, I've ever not seen the agenda and the addendum.
I've been working on it. It's been months.
I'm giving you a path. There's nothing wrong with that, but I've been on the board six years and I don't think we've ever had where we didn't have.
I got something today and he said, you want to put it on for tonight?
You're like, no, I don't want to change our.
Can wait a month.
That's awesome. Okay, let's move. We don't, we have any public participants? Nobody? Okay, we'll do break intermediate. Shelley.
So we've had quite a few busy months. The last, the end of October, we did our penny wars, which is same week as like all of the craziness around campus with dress up and stuff. This year, we've, we, we, yeah, we raised the most we've ever raised, which was over $2,000. All of that money then goes back and we buy gifts for students that are needy or that the teachers pick. And my office is starting to fill up with, with stuff. So some of what I'm going to do parent teacher conference tonight, when I'm not sitting in on, on different conferences is wrapping gifts to get it, get them under the tree so the kids can start seeing what, what they've raised and what it, what it's going towards. Mrs. Cos, Mrs. Voico and Mr. Francis's classes were the grade level winners for the penny wars. They all earned pizza parties. This Tuesday, we have special persons day along with parent teacher conferences. So it's usually grandparents, but we say special persons because some kids have grandparents at work or a parent that can come and not a grandparent. So it's, it's just a time where they can bring people in to see what they're doing. We have snacks and a cool activity this year for them to do. December 15th, in lieu of having an actual Christmas program, because it's a little crazy to try to get to the high school with all of the wonderful stuff that's going on, we're doing a Christmas sing-along in our gym. It's mostly fifth graders that are participating, but all the grades will be in there. And then we're inviting fifth grade parents if they would like to come in to that. We've been doing a lot with staff rapport this year. Our first like staff kind of bonding activity was Boo Guess Who. Mrs. Cos won that. It was a like trivia thing that the staff had to guess which staff member like graduated or liked certain things. It was just a fun thing that we've been trying to work on, getting everybody to know each other. Jump rope started. I think their first event is the first Friday we come back, they're at Caldwell. And then they have the high school, they have Marietta coming up in Muskingham. She has OSU and OU. They're really cool. So if you can ever get to one of those, the kids, kids really do an awesome job. And then we have a little different than we've normally done, the family performance or public, if you would like to go, is December 13th this year. Usually it's in March, but she got it in December. So the kids that are in jump rope club will actually get to perform on that one, which is pretty cool. There's a lot more going on, but that's kind of the gist of the big things that we're doing right now.
Mrs. Sowers, I have a question.
Yes.
Would you need help with the gift wrapping? Because I'm thinking that we could use, could we use students that need community service hours to wrap them, help wrap the presents?
Yeah, we always have high school students wrapping.
Yeah.
So you probably could have, you guys could work it out schedule wise.
Yeah, our high school students, our National Honor Society wraps all of the, I mean, we do the same thing. I was going to go on that, but our National Honor Society students wrap the gifts for the kids.
So I was just wondering, because you said you were going to start wrapping and I'm thinking, could we, if you'd like students?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
You know, just to help you.
Right, no, no. If we take any, any help on that, I'm more than happy. One more thing, thinking of the high school participation, we do have Big Brothers and Big Sisters coming in now. This is like the third or fourth year that we do that. We work with the high school, which will make it so much nicer when we're on one building. Cause they're traveling right now back and forth. But it is a really awesome thing and they, there's like 40 or 50 kids that are, that are taking part in that.
That's been really successful.
Yes, yes. And last, we have food trucks that are coming in tomorrow. We have the mobile meat wagon. So come out and just, it, the staff have really liked that across all the buildings, I think too. It's just a little thing for them to, to enjoy him.
Yeah, you lost me. What suit?
On, on a Friday, we just have them come up and.
She just invites her food trucks.
You don't have to pay for it or anything. They just set up and then my staff, we tell them when my staff can eat and my staff go out, get the food in.
Well, that's neat. So you guys can have different things and it's right there.
Yes, it's literally right outside my office.
I didn't know that.
Construction work, the.
Yeah, we've invited this construction and.
Well, that'd be nice. That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, because then things are popular anymore and they got good food.
They, yes, yes.
It's a lot of different options.
Yes.
That's cool. I've been saying for a while, razors should have one.
Yeah, that could be their winter time like.
For some reason, once they close, you don't still hear nothing from it. No, that's great.
Thanks, Shelley.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to do, we're just going to do elementaries. We're going to do Dawn and Ashley. You guys take turns.
You go first.
Oh, go first. So we've all been very busy. We've hosted Donuts with Grown Ups, Safe Trick or Treat, which was very well received at Byzville. First time we have done it in, oh golly, several years. So it was nice. We got a lot of nice comments about having it again. And I think there were some kids who might've been a tad bit scared, but for the most part, I think it was very good. So we'll just link it to that. We're having book fair this year, again, something we haven't had for many years due to Scholastic not allowing us to because we have steps. So I worked with Mayor Jackson. We have it at the Byzville Fire Department. It's not ideal, but it is giving the kids a chance to get some books and they have been very super excited about it.
That's why they quit doing that at Byzville. I didn't know that.
Yeah, they won't do our steps and I tried. I was like, you know, surely we've got some strong people that get out. Nope, won't do it. Okay. Anyway, on that note, we'll just move on. We also did our first PBIS reward, which was extra recess and snow cones. The kids really loved that. It was a cold day for the snow cones, but we did make it through. We have also done our first fundraiser. It was $15,000 was our goal in sales and I believe we made 17,000. So I have to dress up in a dog suit.
You do.
I don't really know.
Puppy chow.
Something like that. So that'll be super fun. We have also started parent teacher conferences. We started those the first November and bringing parents and during lunch and specials for teachers so that we could get to see everyone. We are not turning anyone away this year. We are making sure that we try to make an effort to see every single parent.
Even if a child's a straight A student or parent?
We did not send home anything that said, we don't want to see you. We said, we want to see you and we're going to make time to do that. So that was a goal for us to, to get out there and do that. So they've been working hard. We are also working hard to establish PACs in the building. Mrs. Webb has been doing monthly PACs. I'll call them snippets because she does like a little reteaching each month when we do our Student of the Month awards. And those have been going very well. We also have been conducting teacher contests where we're looking for those PACs kernels throughout the school. And that's in conjunction with Jordan Wooton, who is our district PACs partner. So we'll have that, I believe, that will end right before Thanksgiving. So we're really getting into it. We're really getting those PACs kernels and seeing those harmonicas out and using them. So it's kind of exciting to see that. Ashley and I have been working on some community partners. We're working with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We started, I started that last year with Mid East. I think only Seekrist is going to be able to benefit from that this year. But next year, we're really working hard to do that K5. So I, I think it's going to be a good partnership and I'll go right along with what you're doing. We're also working with Girl Scouts to provide the Girl Scouts with two options. I'm going to do a STEM activity with, at Byzville and Ashley, I think, I'll let you talk about yours.
I'm doing the backpack program.
Since we're two buildings in the same district, they said we can let our girls participate either. So if they want to do STEM, they can come to Byzville. If they want to do the backpack, which means they just get a backpack and take it home and do five activities. And then Girl Scouts will try to hook them up with a live Girl Scout troop. So nice thing for them to do. Incorporating STEM for girls is huge. With that said, I'm taking myself and two other teachers and we're doing STEM collaborative next month. So that's another thing we're looking forward to. And I've actually seen STEM at work in our building. Kindergarten teachers, I did an evaluation today and she said, I want you to see STEM. And I'm like, cool. So it's, things are really starting to kind of gel together and I'm really super excited about that. Lifewise Academy also is going very well. The transition, I was a little bit worried about leaving the school and coming back. It's been flawless. Chris Claywell has been great. So that is really, it's, it's great. The kids are saying, I'm going to church today. I'm like, okay. You know, I was trying to think, what are you talking about? And then I realized, you know, they're going down to Assembly of God and seeing their, that program. So that's also in full swing. We're starting benchmark assessments when we come back after Thanksgiving. And with that said, I would just like to publicly thank all the board members. It was Board Member Appreciation Day. And I failed to put anything on Facebook, but I am thanking you personally and I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. The communication company didn't see your cupboard.
I did see that.
Cause I didn't know either.
Thank you. Ashley, you follow that one?
I will follow because we, we kind of mirrored the same thing. And I will add on to the Girl Scouts, it will be a free membership for one year for any of the girls that participate. They just have to complete all five activities and they get a free membership.
That's correct.
For a year. So, and then next year, we would like to include you.
No, I'm in on it. I don't remember exactly what I picked, but I did something.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't remember which ones I picked because it was like a month ago when I did it.
And we did try to get Big Brothers, Big Sisters to Byzville because we told them, logistically, it really is right off the interstate and only about 10 minutes. So.
It's still possible.
It's possible.
Not as big of a, I mean, Seekrist is probably a go. We're just keeping our fingers crossed.
We're trying to keep it the same.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's people. It's logistics for Mid East. The one lady said, I'm three days out of my building and that's rough. So I understand that.
Our trunk or treat went great. We did, we did the same thing, PBIS reward. We did snow cones and extra recess. I do not have to dress up as a dog because we did not make that 15,000. We were about 12,000. But we do have the Dog Agility Show on December 5th coming up at Seekrist at 1:10 in the afternoon. And both Dawn and I are doing a K2 12 days of holiday dress up that will be going home tomorrow for the kids. And sending home activities for one of the tree topper days and like the hat day so they can work on things over Thanksgiving to come back. So it would be everything that they have at home. So they don't have to go out and spend a lot of money to participate. We've been doing our Student of the Month assemblies and we've incorporated, it's worded different at my building than at Dawn's, but at my building, it's PACs ticket, purple PACs leader. So they put it in the big drum every week and we draw PACs prizes every Friday. And we have a huge cart of prizes and the kids absolutely love it.
They've done a wonderful job working two buildings like it's one.
Hers is like, hers is.
Her animation.
Hers is first Friday.
It's like, it's awesome to see how they.
It's just called different.
They love the kids and they love what they do. I mean, it's just, it's, it's theirs. So. I didn't mean interrupt it. It's just like, I'm so, I'm always so amazed when you guys get to talking about the kids, how I can just tell it's what it's about. So. We good?
We're good.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Doug with middle school.
All right, band choir concert is tonight. That's where Mr. Ray is running the board, the soundboard there. Triple A, our rewards started today. Sixth grade went today, seventh tomorrow, eighth grade's going Monday. Their reward, they're going to the movie theater and watching.
Marvel's.
Yeah, the Marvel's. I know Mr. Kuzel was wanting a Taylor Swift movie, but. Map testing, middle of December, mid-December, we're going to do the, the middle round there, the second round. Last Wednesday, eighth graders had their career connections trip. We started off at the Pritchard Lawson and then they went to different places throughout Guernsey County, looking at different jobs that's provided around here. It was based on a survey they took with Matty Fraley. And then another group I went to with was with, at ICR there. So a lot more there than you think. Just hoping that, I didn't realize there was so much going on there. So that was pretty successful for the eighth graders. I know some of them, the Wilds came there. There was a group, a couple groups went to the hospital. Couple different fire department, police station, couple of factories. Eighth graders have started selling their raffle tickets, the 12 days of Christmas raffle with 12 baskets that we'll raffle off. The money they raise goes directly towards their trip to DC in March. So we are getting those 12 baskets around. So if anybody has anything they would like to donate towards that, and it might set us up pretty good today with a couple with some of his connections. So we are still gathering those and we'll do those once we come back.
It's not putting any pressure on you, gentlemen.
Winter sports starts here. It probably jumps into Jeff's, but I know our middle school boys and girls basketball have been practicing the last couple of weeks. Wrestling's getting started. Cheerleaders were practicing tonight. So that's all going to get started here shortly. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff for high school and athletics.
Yep, just like the other buildings, high school's been extremely busy the last month. Beginning of October, the FFA Officer Team helped assist in the Guernsey Graze. The Guernsey Graze is a farm to fork event where local agricultural products used to create a meal and all money made during the event goes back to local FFA chapters. Next week, the Farm Bureau is going to come in and present a check to our FFA. Talked to Mrs. Capley today. She's pretty excited about that because she's thinking it's going to be a pretty nice, nice amount. The first week of November, 22 FFA members traveled to Indianapolis for the National FFA Convention. During that time, two Medaberke graduates, Austin Van Noy and Kenzie Combs, were awarded their American FFA degrees. So that's quite an accomplishment. We had students participate in the job interview and parliamentary procedure CDEs currently recently. And all FFA students who participated in that advanced to the district competition. Next week, the novice and advanced procedural teams are going to Sheridan High School to compete. We got a team lead class this year and it's led by Mr. Nichols. He's doing a fantastic job and the students in that class are amazing. But they've been doing some good things inside and outside the classroom, but a few weeks back and it impacted the elementary buildings and broke. But they organized a Halloween, a Halloween boot bag. They got 20,000 pieces of candy donated. The class delivered the candy devised on Seekrist. However, the team lead class got the whole high school involved by decorating the whole building and dressing up in costumes. And then Seekrist students came over in great vans and they received candy.
Brooke. Brooke, you said Seekrist.
Brooke, that's what I know. Yeah. Brooke, Brooke students walked over.
That was quite a hike.
That would be a hike. Brooke, yeah. Brooke students came over in great vans and then they went through the kind of haunted school thing. Mr. Humphrey, were you there that day?
Yeah, I was there. It was incredible.
I, I just couldn't believe, because I just got back from being out a couple of weeks with some medical things. And I couldn't believe the, the amount of work that the kids did to the school. Like it was like, like a haunted, it was a haunted school. I mean, it was pretty cool. Like I, unless you've seen it. Unless you were there and seen it, it's hard to explain, but the amount of work that the, the high school got involved and they love putting on that for the elementary kids. So that's fantastic.
And Jeff, if I can interrupt you for a second, the, the level of involvement of the students at, at the high school was incredible. I mean, they bought into this. And I talked to Mr. Nichols and he said that when the kids went out to the Seekrist and Byzville, the team lead kids, the team leads kids were the ones leading it. And he was impressed because he walked around the school and on the fourth period, which is intervention or.
Advisory.
Advisory. And that's when they were decorating the schools. And even without the team lead there, the kids were out decorating and they were doing stuff. And so the kids really bought into it. And there's a picture in the cafeteria of all the kids dressed up and it's, it's what, fourth of the school?
Oh, easily.
Easily, yeah. I wanted to say half, but I thought that was a little much.
They decorated the entire building.
Yeah.
It was awesome. It really was.
And, and, and team lead, I asked and they're going to present next month. Here's the marketing.
Cool.
That's been super successful.
Speaking of team lead too, on October 26th, the whole class went to Norwalk High School for a student conference. There was over 500 students in attendance from across the state and we were lucky enough to attend that conference. Theme for the conference was enthusiasm and service and grit and leadership. And the kids came back and said they really enjoyed that. So we're going to look at some more leadership conferences that we can send that group. Today, our sophomore class just finished up their showcase business to Mid East campuses. Today was the last day for that. So all sophomores got to attend both Mid East campuses and see what it's all about. So there's a lot of interest there. We started our annual jingle jangle challenge at the high school this, this Monday. Basically every advisory class competes against each other. We do a very similar thing. The top three classes will get lunch provided, B-Dubs pizza. And then a movie and a chance to win some gear. We usually do that the last day before Christmas break. With that money, we buy Christmas gifts for several families in the district. Last year, the high school alone provided gifts for 19 different students. So we typically pick a student in our own building who, you know, needs some, needs some extra help. But if they have siblings, we, we purchase for the siblings as well. So we had 19 students last year. We're hoping to, to beat that this year. And then the marching band finished the season. They earned two overall superior ratings, qualified them for state. The band participated in state finals on November 4th and earned an overall rating during that performance. Some upcoming events, we got a lot coming up. Next Tuesday, I, I invite all you guys to come to the high school, but the FFA will have their annual Thanksgiving dinner right in the ag shop. It's pretty cool because they bring in all the food, they cook it. The desserts are phenomenal. That'll start at 10:15. Next Tuesday night, uh, next Tuesday night in our Colt College at 6 o'clock. We do this the same night of parent teacher conferences. This is our third year, I believe, we've done at the high school. It works really well, but we do our annual financial aid night. I talked to Mrs. Kaner earlier today. We already have a large group that RSVPs, so we're hoping for a really, really large turnout. Again, that's at 6 o'clock next Tuesday evening in the Colt College. National Honor Society, and again, I, I encourage you guys to come to that because it's a great event. But National Honor Society inductions are on November 30th at 8:30 in the high school auditorium. Last Wednesday, myself, the two National Honor Society advisors, and then we have a panel of five teachers. We met after school and we will be inducting 20 new members on the 20th, which is large. However, when we went through, they met all the criteria. And again, that criteria is set, that's a, that's a, that's not something that's set by Medaberke High School. It's set by the, the chapter. So we're inducting 20, again, on the 30th. The high school band will participate in the Byzville Christmas Parade on December 2nd. And then they're going to have following up on middle schools tonight, but the high school bands having their holiday concert on December 14th at 7 o'clock in the high school auditorium. So a lot going on here before Christmas. Athletics, I'll be quick, but we are in between seasons. I just want to, I think it's, it's right to kind of highlight some of the fall season things because we did have a great fall season. Both our boys and girls golf teams made it out of sectionals and competed at districts, which was really shocking. Not ma, not necessarily shocking, but this is the first year in Medaberke history that we've had a girls' golf team. And they've, they've made it out of sectionals and went to districts, which is pretty tough to do, especially in Division Two girls' golf, because it's very, very competitive. And the good thing is all those girls return next year. So the expectations are going to be high. Our girls cross country team qualified for regionals as a team and they're actually one place away from qualifying for state as a team, which would have been an awesome accomplishment. Sophomore, Kara, Kara Singleton did qualify as an individual. She's only a sophomore. So that's exciting because she has two more years to hopefully not only qualify for state, but, but potentially place and then become all Ohio. Football, we finished four and six. Again, I don't, I don't evaluate, me personally, I don't evaluate wins and losses because there's a lot that goes into things. But what I do know is we were one and nine last year. We're four and six this year. We only had six seniors on the roster. So when you look at that and you're playing teams with 12, 15 seniors and a lot of experience, it goes a long ways. When you got 15, 16 year old boys playing against 18 year old men, there is a big difference. But with that being said, the expectations next year are very high. I already met with Coach Norman and he's well aware of that because we got a lot of young talent coming. And like I said, they all have a lot of playing experience. And then I can't say enough about our volleyball program. They became only the second team in school history to make the state in consecutive years. Our girls' basketball did it back in the late eighties, back to back years. And volleyball now became the second team to go back to back to make the state level. I mean, Coach Center has a program role and I went to the state volleyball championships. I mean, obviously we played Thursday, but I stayed throughout the whole time and it was amazing because I had coaches coming up to me and saying, hey, you got any openings? You want a scrimmage? So we're, we put ourselves on the map when it comes to volleyball for sure. That's it.
Very good. Awesome. We don't have any public participants. I already touched on that. I'm going to turn it over to the treasurer's court to Brandon.
All right, we have approval of the minutes from October the 19th. Approval of the planter's report from October. And then kind of going along with now having the addendum, we only have one that announced certificate this month. So that's, I think, the lowest it's ever been. And then we also have approving the contract with Julian and Groove. That's just for our federal expenditures. They actually review our schedules, some required for the audit. The next one is approving annual contract with Frontline Education. Basically, we are going to, I think for the first time in district history, we're going to actually have, our payroll will be online and not manual paper time sheets. It's something that's, we've been needing to have for many years. So I'm happy that it's finally becoming a reality. So we've been working with them. It's a pretty intense process getting it set up. Once it's all implemented, hopefully when we move into the new building, it will be a very seamless process. Item F, this is something that I know all of the employees are always thrilled about. It's our, actually the first insurance holiday we've had since I've been here and that's for the month of December. So everyone's been doing a pretty good job at keeping claims down. Everyone's doing a really good job at staying in network, which is our most important part. We actually had the, our insurance rep, she went up to the building and they said, this is probably the, the lowest amount of issues that we've seen. And actually since she's seen, since she's worked for rolling, I mean, worked for us and they've been involved for many years. So it seems like everything's working out really good with that and showing, showing that on the claims still. And then item G is, it's that time of year, it's the five year forecast. It's always, there's always a lot of variables that go into that, but thankfully the state funding is starting to stabilize. Governor Dewine, I think he's starting to get everything the way he wants it. And the state funding's been pretty beneficial to us. So we're lucky because, you know, a, a good chunk of our revenue is, does come from the state. And we're, we're also very fortunate to have some commercial and industrial real estate, you know, agriculture, that, that helps us too. But, you know, ultimately, you know, you always want to make sure that your, your state aid's coming in pretty strong, which looks like it is. But it looks like where we're at right now is probably where we're going to be at in terms of revenue for the next several years, based on all the forecasts. Of course, we did receive the first full power plant payment. So that's reflected in there for the next five years. But, you know, all of that money is going to pay for, or bond payment on the new schools. But still, it's great because we should be seeing some, hopefully significant savings when we go into the new, new building. So that's going to be nice. You will notice in the personnel services, that's our salaries, you're going to see a huge jump in there right now in 2025 and actually 2024. That is actually because our COVID relief money, our ARPA and ESSR money, that is running out. So basically we've been subsidizing about a million dollars a year of our salaries out of that. You know, we're definitely looking at ways for overtime, you know, hopefully our payroll drops. uh drops just on its own. And again, through the restructuring, we'll hopefully start to see some of the positives. Um, so I wouldn't be too alarmed at that. Uh, the benefit cost, you know, that's just something that, you know, we can, we only have so much control over. Um, you know, unfortunately, it sounds like uh SCRS is trying to make it where we're gonna start paying even more into retirement. We're paying fourteen percent right now. So that's something we have to keep in mind, you know, as we might end up having to pay more in insurance. Medical bills, they just, they, they are, you know, always through the rough, the increases. So I try to, you know, I try to be as conservative as I could, but at the same time, you know, we have to, um, you know, actually look back at what, what the past has looked like. So the big picture is, is, uh, and again, this is a five-year forecast, farther out you are, the less accurate it is. Um, we will be starting to see, we're projected to see some deficit spending starting in twenty twenty-six. However, we're very fortunate, we have the carryover. Um, and I am anticipating us having uh some larger carryover in the next couple of years. So that's gonna help offset it. And hopefully, within the next three or four years, we start to see some cost reductions in those areas that will be part of the restructuring. So, um.
Not to prop Brandon up too much, that's the best five-year forecast we've had since I've been here. I've looked at a lot of, but I can't remember. You know what I mean?
They were always in the red.
We're very fortunate, because usually, um.
But you wrote it in Chinese.
That's kinda complicated, yeah. So, um, so basically, yeah, I mean, usually you, you, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon to start seeing, you know, negative fund balances project at the end of the five-year forecast. So like I said, we're very fortunate based on, you, we've had a lot of good things play in and we've tried to make some good decisions. You know, they might, they've been difficult decisions, but I know this past school year and actually, well, over the summer and the spring, you know, we did have some positions that, you know, were eliminated, but thankfully it was through attrition. And I think we were starting to see some savings in that. So um, we're making progress. It's just, you know, progress is never easy initially. So.
Well, I think the key is, like you said, through attrition too. We've, we've told everybody that from day one. You know, we knew when we got into this, that was gonna be very important. So.
Yeah, so far no.
And I got.
Nobody's lost.
No.
Well, yeah, yeah.
We cut a lot of positions, yeah, nobody's lost. So.
I think you guys are doing a great job, Brandon.
Okay, I see that.
So if it doesn't pass, you have a one point seven million. Yeah, yeah, you're not allowed to report to the state a renewal levy until it passes.
Right, so.
Right.
It's always unnecessarily low, but that's by far the best one I've seen.
And, and like I said, I mean, I, 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 I can, I ran it so many different ways. And I'm like, I think based on the past and where we know we're going, and we, we only have so much we can control. That's the thing in a school, cause most of your expenditures are payroll and benefits, you know, there's not much else you can do, but.
Hopefully between now and then too, in five years, like I said, we've talked about other, you know, oil and gas things that might pop up. I mean.
None of that is, none, none of that's forecasted in this either.
But that's what I'm saying, it would be very, I mean, wouldn't that be?
Exact, absolutely.
Just like this lease.
And the, the public utility tax, you know, that's something that we're not gonna know until most likely next October with the power plant, that's.
There's a lot of things.
There's a lot of variables, you know.
You know, you know.
This is just everything you're. Real estate tax reassessments, there's just a lot of, a lot of things. I mean, you use your property, value does not decrease, you know, but again, we can't product, really productive increase, you know, because they don't want us to do that.
Everything going on and you look at what's going on at the school and the building.
I mean, it's all been put to good.
Yeah, I mean, really good.
It's long-term investments.
Yeah, really good use, so.
And I think that's it.
Well, that's awesome news. All right, uh, do I have a motion for items A through G?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to standing committees. Uh, anything on policy? Matt, Darren, anything?
Nope.
No? Uh, athletic Brad, Mike?
Yes, sir.
God.
I wanna thank Mr. Wheeler for the work he does with the, with the athletics. So, I mean.
Very good.
Just, there was a lot of outcry in the community about the private school versus public school, you know, issue. And in like, you know, when you look at the competitive balance review they did in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, it just doesn't feel like enough from the standpoint of you have one state champ. If you take Division One away, because that seems to be a fair playing field, it seems like that's right. But Division Two, girls' volleyball, both pl- teams, private schools. Division Three, both private. Or no, one private, uh, we had a public, uh, we didn't have a public state champion out of two or three. Division Four, we get one. So congratulations to New Green and, you know, winning the, for the private schools, you know, that's really exciting. And then girls' golf, Division Two, private school. Boys' golf, Division Two, private school. Boys' golf, Division Three, private school. And I, I mean, I just feel like as a board, although I know we don't have any standards, we should at least write a letter to the OHSA and ask for more competitive balance for the smaller schools. Because I just feel like if you take away Division One, you're not getting that.
I mean, I, I actually years ago, I, I asked Mr. Wheeler about it and they do win a disproportionate amount.
Yeah, um, I will say this, it's.
It's such a touchy subject too.
I can't say a whole lot, but uh stay tuned. I would say in the le- next two months, uh, cause as you guys know, I'm on the uh OHSA Board of Directors. I would say within the next two months, there's gonna be some uh big news coming out of uh Columbus and it's gonna impact um all sports uh across the state of Ohio. So.
That's good to hear. Cause yeah, the conver- before coming, you know, the conversation, I mean, yeah, that's good. Okay. Yeah. Uh, Mike, anything?
Yeah, um, important thing, exciting thing from, from Mideast is um, they've got a one point three million dollar grant for the uh Appalachian Regional Commission for the CDL program over there. Um, to help fund that, um, and that's just by more uh tractor trailers, help the uh students learn more. Uh, they also got a um a three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar grant from the Straker Charitable Foundation to help the high school students pay for getting their CDL. So that's a program I think we talked about in the past, where the students um can learn in the classroom, in the high school, and then once they hit eighteen, go over, pass.
Take the test.
Bill Cackley's gonna be our person. He's uh, yeah, he's gonna go and get the training and then he'll be able to teach during the day. And they'll have that part done. And when they turn eighteen, they can go over and finish up and they've got their CDL. Yeah, it's fantastic. And I can't say enough about Matt Sheridan and his group, cause that's, that's fantastic. Well, they've been working on that for years to get it done and he figured it out.
Yeah. So we're, we're excited about that. That's gonna be a real benefit um to the school districts, because it gives our students another uh trade.
Uh, you know, it's near and dear to my heart. I've talked about being in the business.
The hazmat, and, and the school bus endorsement would be nice.
Well, we're working on that. We're working on that. Um, that's a lot of hoops through the state.
Yeah, well, the hazmat, you know, you can go in and take a thirty-question test, get fingerprinted, take the test. But the CDL, I mean, if you got that, the other stuff can be added. But you're right, Darren, that, that would be great. And the bus, everything. But to where we're at now compared to where we were at years ago, you know, with, I mean, you don't have many people out there say, boy, I wish I had my CDL. And how many people regret when it went from, it used to be a chauffeur's license? Well, a lot of guys grandfathered with chauffeur's license years ago. So they just went straight from that to CDL. Well, some didn't do that. And now they gotta go through all the stuff and they don't want to. You know, it's like, well, I should've, you know, took my grandfather and, and paid attention. So it's, it's huge anymore. I mean, it's just, there's so many opportunities. And I know some people think it's track driver. Well, you know, that makes this whole world go round, guys.
And there's so many brands.
Oh, it's, it's unbelievable.
Kids have so many options coming straight out of high school now. And then there's options built upon those options. It's just, it's unbelievable.
Well, that's good news. Uh, personnel negotiations?
I did ask uh OC, we have to negotiate with both groups, both unions this year. I asked OC to try to get that started after the new year, because we've got other things going on with the transition next year. So hoping to start that one early.
Yeah, cause uh, when, when you go back, when you open back up?
March.
March?
But it's.
Would it be before March?
It doesn't matter, because then I can't vote on it. So I can't really be a part of the negotiation anyways.
Man, it, it will be, but yeah, we'll do it the same way we did last time, if you guys are good with that.
Yeah.
And that one was kind of the tougher one to get finished last time too. So I wanted to start it a little earlier.
Building grounds, uh Brad?
Yes, sir, it's coming up.
That's, I just, like I said, you, you look out there and you see the shack and you see the school. It's, it's really like, it's going quick. It's amazing. Looks great.
Uh, and they did inside, it'll slow down.
Y'all do that. Yeah. Uh, nothing on audit?
I was going to mention on the audit, um, everyone should've got an email from the state. Uh, there is a fraud questionnaire that they're wanting all board members to fill out. They said if you um do not wanna complete it, um, you can reach out to the auditor there and um, if you could set up the time, have a quick phone call, it won't take too long. It's just something that, it's a new process that the auditor is wanting, um.
I seen it for the.
So it might be easier just to reach out to her and have her call you that way, cause the form does look kind of intimidating, as I will say that as a former employee of the office.
Do you have a number for us?
Yeah, I can, I can get that to you.
Okay.
Off camera.
Yeah. Okay, uh, community outreach, Darren, Matt?
Uh, Michael Leimer from the Guernsey County Public Library wanted to invite everyone to the grand opening of the Byzville remodel, December eighth, seven AM.
December eighth at seven AM.
But he said that they're having some, some supply chains issues and it could get pushed back, but he would let us know as soon as he could, but.
You'll keep us updated on that?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Cause that, that one, quick and looks really good.
It does look good. And I think a lot of our students use that. So it's a, it's a good part of it.
Uh, business advisory, nothing? Old business, nothing. I'm gonna turn it over to you Devon, superintendent's report.
A, uh, some hirings here, largely coaches. Um, you'll see another one. Not only do we have retired teacher Ty Sitchin back in the classroom, he is uh, gonna do some coaching again, like old times. Uh, otherwise, like I said, largely coaches, uh, some subs, but and another pair of rope, but uh, good hires for this month, except the following resignations. Uh, Billy West Cook is going into another job. Uh, C, approved Neil update. D, approved Wellness Food Service Nutrition Standard Reports, we have sent to the state each year. Uh, E, approved Teacher Training Services Contract Work Agreement with Guernsey Health Choices. Uh, that's a deal um, I do with Guernsey Health Choices, where she comes in, works with the staff on um trying to get Paul Verdi and getting through students, you know, coming from different backgrounds than most teachers typically come from, because that is obviously a harder transition than most would realize. Uh, E's donations, excuse me. G, approved the school district calendar change. That is simply from where I canceled for the state tournament game and we're moving everything to the twenty-first. Um, H, approved the out-of-state Myrtle Beach trip for the softball program, same as they did last year. And let's just do A through H for now. Sorry, I forgot to add the next one out. So yes.
A through H?
Yep.
Do I have a motion for A through H?
Brad, that's second.
Brad, we'll go ahead and Brad to cut.
Roll call, please.
All right, uh, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and this has been an interesting and a long time coming thing. Approved renaming of the track, Joe Casper Memorial Track in memory of late coach and educator Joe Casper. Um, a couple of his friends approached us a few months ago. This is something that brought up when Dalton Summers was superintendent here and couldn't get it done. And we'd looked at a couple of different options, kinda decided at the end, you know, renaming the track after him. And, you know, a few people deserving it up for that, Joe Casper's definitely one.
Do I, okay.
One second.
Roll call.
All right, uh, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Abstain.
All right, J, approved support Rolling Hills matching scholarship with the power plant donation as presented as part of our original agreement and everything where, you know, we match back.
Uh, do I have a motion for item J?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to make a slight adjustment to my final one. Um, K, as it reads in front of you, it's approved the land professional disclosure statement as presented. And I'd like to add, and approve the lease agreement.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, uh, Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Abstain.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Very good.
So you added information on that, otherwise I'm good.
We got through it, guys. Uh, any correspondence?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any information items?
Yes, uh, we had a board member request a change to the December meeting date uh based on some medical procedures. It is currently set, it's on here, I believe it's the fourteenth, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, yeah, currently set on the fourteenth. Obviously, we can't go later Thursday, cause you get into holiday season. Um.
Yeah, there was a reason we scheduled that.
Because of um.
That's right.
Mr. Rollins.
That's right.
What was the thirty?
Yeah, can we go past it?
Yes.
Would anybody be interested in a Friday or a Monday? That's.
I'm fine with that.
Are you Darren?
Yeah.
Would the, would the fifteenth be easier? Or would that work for you? Cause that'd probably be easier for Darren.
Do you think you'll be okay on the fifteenth?
Fifteen.
Do you?
Sure.
Oh, I can, I can say, I can look at other days.
Let's try, that's only two days, you might not.
Or we could go to the twenty-second. Or twenty-first or twenty-second, that's over Christmas break.
I'm good. And how are you guys on doing? The fifteenth will be fine. If you don't think it'll be up for it, we can go to.
Why don't we go to the twenty-first? That's the following Thursday, it's during break, but you know, it doesn't change us.
Does that work for Mr. Rollins?
It's all okay.
I don't think he needs to be here for that. He doesn't have to be here, we just can't go earlier than that. Yeah, so.
This is just approving his contract.
Yeah, you have to wait so many days.
I think it'd be better, Brad, I think.
Cause you may have. Yeah, that is better. I'm glad you mentioned that.
The twenty-first at six?
Yeah, so.
Is, okay. Six PM, the twenty-first.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very good. So.
It'll be a long time. Barring anything crazy between now and then.
We don't have any executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
It will be a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Urdak?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.